It's 6:30, folks. So before we get started, I just want to give a little shout out and do a short report for the commission and our members of the audience. President John Kennedy once wrote, "Efforts and courage are not without purpose and direction." So ladies and gentlemen, tonight marks our midterm session. It's been almost six months since this commission was seated, and I wish to congratulate each and every member on their contribution to efficient county operations. Together, we have made great strides in saving tax dollars and streamlining the way we do business. We have very much to celebrate. Our email system, our electronic dockets, website redesign, Granicus Office Management Program, and the move to a paperless operation are all cost-effective measures that improve our efficiency and improve transparency to all our constituents. So I want to thank each and every one of you for embracing these upgrades that both save time and money. So furthermore, educating our commission on our community needs has proven beneficial to all of us, as it allows for better decision-making when we take action on changing the lives of our residents. We'll have one of those presentations tonight on kids of the community. Our taxpayers expect no less from us, and it's been my quest to provide reports and give timely updates on each and every meeting. My door is always open, as you know, so I thank you for believing in my leadership. Yes, over the last six months, we've measured a lot of progress, and it will continue by utilizing our successful teamwork model. I wish to commend all of you that have been diligent in your duties as committee members and county commissioners. We are all public servants entrusted with the responsibility of governance. Thank you for accepting that role as we deliver the progress that our taxpayers expect. Along with those new office improvements, a monumental cost-saving energy program for our schools was approved by this commission. The HVAC and lighting upgrades will boost efficiency and reduce the cost of repairs on our aging facilities. So thank you Director Cox and members of the school board who worked diligently to make that happen, and thank you Commissioner Brown and the Education Committee for your efforts to champion this investment in our children. Our plan is now to partner with the county and ESG on a similar energy proposal for our county buildings, including the jail. Yes, together, we have tackled the overwhelming jail issues and made great strides in improving the building conditions and the equipment there, including bulletproof vests and tasers for the safety of our officers and guards. As you may know, the jail experienced a riot on the sheriff's first night on the job, and the lack of tasers could have resulted in a huge liability for the county had the staff been killed or injured. We continue our work with Bob Bass and Jim Hart on an aggressive plan of action that's due soon to keep our jail stay certified, and I'm confident that the sheriff and I can validate the recent upgrades and certify our reduced inmate populations to satisfy those states' requirements. So thank you Chairman Stephen Elton, the County Corrections Partnership for your diligence and support in this matter, and thank you for Commissioner Stotts for your work with Brad Price and others in addressing the mental health issues and the mental health needs of those that are housed in our jail. You've seen the progress. You have made a difference. The change has been remarkable, and we should commend the sheriff and his staff for those continued efforts and their quest to improve the conditions there. As you know, Upland Design has assisted our required county ADA plan, completed assessments at the jail, conducted inspections on our failing roofs, and with this rain, I don't know what to expect, but I met with Alan Hill yesterday to go over preliminary costs for the upgrades needed for our facilities. He will attend the February 26 meeting with Bob Bass to provide input and updates on those reports. We should thank Upland for their professional services that will help make our plans easier to implement. So all you got to do is look around. You know, the new positive atmosphere has been a game changer for all of us. The citizens are pleased with the progress, and employees' morale has surged. Warren County is depending upon this 24-member commission to individually and collectively deliver the change that is expected of us, and we're well on our way of making that happen. There will be difficulties ahead, I'm sure, but I am also sure that this team of elected officials, with our work and diligence, we can complete any task placed before us. Remember, we still have a budget to prepare. There's nothing to fear in that. I have confidence that our Finance Chair, Richard Grissom, will successfully lead that charge despite those challenges. To quote Sir Winston Churchill, "When the going gets tough, you're just getting started." So to all Warren County Commissioners, elected officials, department directors, and fellow citizens, we should all be proud to live in the greatest nation, the greatest state, the greatest community in the world. We can celebrate the success of the last six months and make a pledge to continue our work so the next six months of team efforts will deliver more remarkable results. It is day 171, 1,290 days left in our terms where we can change the lives of our citizens. All things are possible, and I am sure that we have got this. So thank you for your leadership and service to Warren County. Onward, stronger together, we can do anything. So thank you.
All right. Regular scheduled meetings, Warren County Commissioners, down sessions. Jimmy, head it for the flag. Please keep all noise and movement to minimal, folks. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off and put it on vibration. Please remain standing for a word of prayer and our pledge to the flag.
I want to welcome Mr. Jeff Owens, who is the pastor of First Baptist Church, to give our invocation tonight.
Thank you. Would you bow with me, everyone? Father, we come into your presence, and we just thank you for all the many blessings that you bestow upon us. Sometimes we are neglectful in being mindful of the little things, the little details, God, that you take care of in such beautiful fashion for our lives. And sometimes with the sunshine comes the rain, and sometimes that rain falls and it falls and it falls. Lord, we're very mindful, God, that you're still in control, and, Lord, you have a purpose for every season of our lives, the sunshine and the rain, the mountains and the valleys. I pray for this commission, Lord, that you give them wisdom and direction and discernment for making decisions that are not only good for this community, but also ultimately glorifying to you, because, God, you desire the very best for your creation, your very best for your people. And so, Lord, I pray for those that serve in this community, those that are in first responders, our teachers, those that work tirelessly behind the scenes, making sure that this is a great place to live, a great place to worship. Thank you, Lord, for our churches, and I lift them to you, and our pastors and church leaders, and, God, that we all work together as a team to do our very best to honor you and to honor one another. We ask again that you be in charge of this meeting, and we pray your blessings upon it now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If you'll remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, clear of sin and justice for all. May be seated. First item of business is roll call. Ms. Scott.
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
David Dunlap.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Deborah Evans.
Here.
Steve Glenn.
Here.
Richard Grissom.
Here.
Stephen Elton.
Here.
Robert Hennessy.
Here.
Lori Judkins.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Daniel Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
Kristy Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Tyrone Sparkman.
Here.
Joseph Stotts.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Clayne Wiltshire.
Here.
Thank you. Next item is adoption of docket. Is there a motion to adopt the docket? We have a motion from Commissioner Stotts. We have a second from Commissioner Taylor. All in favor of adoption of docket, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Reading of minutes. I think each of you had a copy of the last board minutes sent to you. Is there a motion dispensed with reading and approval minutes? Yes, sir. We have a motion from Commissioner Bell and a second from Commissioner Elton. Anybody want to speak to that motion or have any corrections? Seven minutes. And all in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Public comment tonight. We don't have anyone scheduled for public comment, but I did want to recognize a visitor that we have with us tonight. So we have Mr. Charlie Curtis, who is a former member of the General Assembly and now Executive Director of Tennessee County Commission Association. So I thank you for being with us today. So some people may have some questions of you later, so anyway, we welcome you to be here tonight. Next item is employee recognition, and so I've got a couple of employees to recognize tonight. First one I'd like to recognize is Mr. Josh Roberts, who is our new Director of Sanitation. If you will come to the podium, Josh. And so he's our new sanitation director. Some of you have met him already. He's doing a remarkable job, so I want to give you a shout out for everything that you've done thus far in the department. So you've got big shoes to fill, so I know you'll be giving a report here shortly to us, but I want to give you a little shout out and thank you for stepping up and being such an excellent employee. We kind of took you from the Highway Department, but you've transitioned into this job, and we're proud to have you in that position. So thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy, and I want to thank y'all for this opportunity. I look forward to working for y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next employee that I would like to recognize will be our new Veterans Service Officer, so Mr. David Smith. If you would like to come to the podium and tell me a little bit about yourselves and the commission.
Sure. Thank you, County Executive. My name is David Smith. I live in District 10, Cole and Gary. Lived here about seven years, grew up down by Chattanooga, and just want to thank everybody for this opportunity to serve our county and especially our veterans and their families. I look forward to it. That's something that has always been close to my heart as a veteran. I don't think we can do enough for them, and so anything I can do to help them here, that's what I'm going to do. And if you know anybody that needs help or needs to apply for any kind of benefits, veteran-wise, send them our way.
Thank you very much. Our next employee that I would like to recognize, Sergeant Bruington, if you'll come to the I've known Sergeant Bruington for a long time. I taught his children, and when I was a school teacher, I had the pleasure of being a cohort of his at Warren County High School. He did an excellent job in the ROTC program, and when this position came open, he transitioned into this job and for the last five years has been a dutiful employee of the county and done an excellent job as Veteran Service Officer. Have had zero complaints while I've been county executive on that department. He goes far beyond the call of duty. He's in that office, he's making home visits, he's connecting people with the right resources. He's got his certification. He's gone over and over and over again, the little extra mile to make those persons who are needing assistance, widows and others, to connect them with the benefits and the services that are provided. So I want to recognize Sergeant Bruington tonight on his employee appreciation and your dedication to Warren County. So I've got a little something I want to step down and give you. Thank you for your service in Warren County. He's moving, he's not leaving because he wants to leave. He moved to Murfreesboro to be closer to family, and so he's been driving back and forth for over a month now to fulfill this job. So he's gone that extra mile over and over again, so we want to thank you for your service, and you're welcome to visit anytime. So thank you very much. I want you to say a little something.
I figured that. What a journey and a trip I have been on, okay? When I came up here, I knew zero about what I was getting into, and I have learned as time goes on. I have met some of the most outstanding people that you could ever imagine. The veterans are out there, but just getting them in here, sometimes it takes an act of Congress, okay? So like Jimmy had said, I have been out to their homes, I talk to them, I go to nursing homes, various things like it, and I have truly enjoyed it. It's been an amazing trip, and I thank all of you people also. So thank you very much.
So David Smith, you're going to have some big shoes to fill today. He worked all day with Sergeant Bruington, job shattered him, so we're hoping to transition him into that job in the next two weeks and hit the road running, so on that one. So thank you very much. Next item is elected officials departmental reports. Finance Director Justin Cotton.
Thank you. You have my report. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them at this time.
We have a motion to approve.
Mr. Justin, I do have one question.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Elton.
On page 14, it says local option sales tax.
Yes.
And I see that there's 833,000 in there. We've only budgeted 200. This is 400% above. Can you, where did this money come from? I'm just sort of curious what it is, and it's sort of anomaly there, a pretty big anomaly.
Yeah, that is a, that is a pretty big anomaly. I can't answer that at this time, but I can definitely look into it and report back at a later date. That's really all I can tell you, but I can definitely have you an answer for that next month, or I can send it out to all the Commissioners as soon as I find out.
Yeah, thank you. I just, it was a big anomaly, and I was sort of curious about that.
Yeah.
You have the report. Is there a motion to accept the report? Commissioner Stotts, second from Commissioner Stout. Anybody else want to speak to that motion? All in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like son. Motion carries. Highway Department, Mr. Glenn.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court, you have my report. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer.
Hope to adopt.
We have a motion from Commissioner Prater, a second from Commissioner Bell. Any further discussion? Speak to the motion. All in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Chairman, could I make a?
Yes, I was going to.
Speak about the flooding tonight.
Yes.
You know, everybody needs to be careful. It looks like there are going to be some flooding, and you know, if you see signs up, respect them. If we put them up, you know, we put signs up before roads close or impassable during high water, and you know, people sometimes want to drive on, think they can make it, but you know, you need to turn around, don't drown, and respect our signs and respect the water, because once you get in a situation, you can't get out of it without any help. So everybody be cautious. If you don't have to be out, stay home, but traveling, drive slower, and really respect the moving fast water. Thank you very much.
Both inside the city and out in the county, there'll be law enforcement.
Yes.
Out there, plus Highway and Street Department, folks, so please be cognizant of barriers and barrels and signage, and be careful on dark roads where you know that there's moving water, so please be careful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next report is Sanitation Department, recognize Josh Roberts.
Mr. Chairman and ladies and gentlemen of the court, y'all should have my monthly report. If there's any questions, I could answer them for you.
I have one, Josh, please.
Okay.
Just to give us an update, newspaper and cardboard, I understand it's costing us money to get rid of them. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, Mr. England. The new sprint is costing us money. We're having to pay 45, 50 a ton to get rid of it. It's going to the landfill at Southern Central. The cardboard is not costing us no money. We're hauling it to Mamelton Green, but we're not getting no money for that, and we're looking into some things, Man County Executive Jimmy Haley, and we're supposed to be getting some meetings with some guys. Y'all are more than welcome to attend, and maybe we can fix this problem.
On the newspaper issue, is there any way of selling that or giving it to where it doesn't cost us? Because if I understand, it's about roughly $450 a load to get rid of.
Yeah, around nine ton, that'd be about $400. That's normally what we carry out there, while we're averaging about nine ton on truck. And as of right now, we cannot. I called Telehome, they're taking it down there, or I was told they were taking it. I called last week, I had a load, they would not accept it. Nobody's accepting. We had to haul it to Southern Central and pay to get rid of it.
All right, thank you, Josh.
Yes, sir.
Will you have the report? Is there a motion to accept the report?
Marshal Duke, say.
Commissioner Savage, second from Commissioner England. Any further discussion? All in favor of adoption of the report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the sheriff's report, so recognize Sheriff Tommy Myers.
Good evening, Mr. Haley, members of court. Do you have a copy of my report? If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Sheriff, I do have one question, and I'll continue to ask this question. On the back of your report, we've got on medication zero and average per inmate zero. I'm just wondering, I know we spend a lot of money, I looked at the budget, on medication, but yeah, we don't show you here. Why is that?
There's a couple reasons that. Mr. Elton, one is our software that we have right now is out of date. We're required to file monthly reports with the state from day one. For a long time now, we've been having issues with that. Our nurses are not required also to put that in our SOM system because it's all integrated with Tiber's, and they pull the stats from those files. But in the near future, I'm hoping that we will fix that number there. I can tell the court that right now that the number of inmates on medications is around 50. I think our numbers were 242 today.
I want to commend you and also the rest of the judicial branch here in Warren County for doing a phenomenal job about getting their numbers down. I know it's not just your, you don't get to tote that flag by yourself, but I know you're doing a phenomenal job about getting state inmates out, and I commend you and the rest of the guys for doing what they're doing about getting their numbers down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elton. That's just a prime example of teamwork.
Thank you, Sheriff. Is there a motion to accept the report? Second from Commissioner, first, motion made by Commissioner Hennessy, second by Commissioner England. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
I do also commend the sheriff and his staff. They've worked very hard. I'm out there nearly every day, or talk to you every day, about correcting some issues, so it's been a hard road, but we've got there, so we've made the progress, and we'll be celebrating that a little bit later as well when we submit that report and get it approved by the state. So Warren County Schools, recognize Director Bobby Cox.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I think you have my report. I'll be glad to answer any questions about the school system that you might have.
Is there a motion to accept the report?
I'd like to make a comment.
All right, thank you.
I just really want to say thank you to Monti Ellis and her staff and to you for allowing her to open up our school, Bobby Ray School, in the afternoons on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Our community has lost an open gym for the kids to go and adults to go and just shoot basketball, and that is an extremely important thing that goes on in this community and has for years, and they have done this, and hopefully there could be even more churches and schools and facilities that are going to step up to the plate in the next 18 to 20 months while the civic center is closed. And I really, when I saw that in the paper, I was so thankful, and I just want you to know, I appreciate it.
You're more than welcome. Glad to do that.
Cooperation, collaboration, working together in partnerships and teams, so that's important things. That's going to get us through them. Any other questions, Mr. Cox? Is there a motion to approve? We have a motion from Commissioner Glenn, and there are a second from Commissioner Stotts. Any further questions, Mr. Cox? All in favor of adoption of his report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, budget and finance, Mr. Grissom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget and finance has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Building and grounds, Carl E. Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, building and grounds has nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic agriculture development, Commissioner Martin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at this time, economic and agriculture does not have anything to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Education, Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Cox added in his report the important events that are going on right now in the Education Department of our county. I just wanted to remind you, on February 26 is when the bids will be reviewed for the West Elementary Project at that school board meeting and awarded or not. So if anybody's interested in going, you're always welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Financial management, Finance Director Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Financial management has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Health and welfare, Commissioner Wiltshire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make sure everyone understands that we are close to hiring a part-time help out at Animal Control and Adoption Center, and we're still working on the chip system and getting through all of the initial startup of that, and hopefully we'll have both those part-time help and the chip system in full function soon.
Thank you. Highway and bridge, Commissioner Prater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We don't have anything to report, but I just want to follow up with Levy, because we're due about six more inches of this rain, and this water level is going to get up on some of these back roads, and I just want everybody to be careful. Thanks.
Thank you. Policy and personnel, Commissioner Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy and personnel will be having a meeting next week, and members will be notified. Thank you.
Safety, Mr. Commissioner Lee is not here. I think Commissioner England's going to make that report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as the ambulance service, it's going good out there. We'll report the ambulance that was in Carrick back a couple months ago or so in front of the mall. It's been in the shop, being worked on and fixed, and as far as I know, I think it should be on delivery here on Friday. So when we get approved, it should be back on the road Friday afternoon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Finishing up those reports, we'll move on to County Corrections Partnership Committee. Chair recognizes Commissioner Elton.
Thank you. Got quite a bit to report. Obviously, there's a lot going on. The first thing I want to do, again, going back to the jail, they're doing a tremendous job down there. At our last meeting, we was able to tour the facility, and it looks like a different place. I mean, I cannot say how much different it looks. They've done a lot of painting, they've done a lot of maintenance stuff, they're using some of the inmates to do that work, and they're doing a tremendous job in making that place look good. Now, we have had a lot of issues, and I think what County Exec Haley is working on with the AC unit and the grant, or not the grant, but the program is going to be extremely important. In the last couple of months, we've had two units go out in some of the coldest weather of the season, and we had to get some space heaters and stuff out there, so those aging units are definitely an issue, and we need to do something about that, and hopefully we can piggyback on that. Food budget, we were told that they're doing a phenomenal job, actually getting better food than they've ever had. They hired somebody from Foodland, I believe, and he's doing a tremendous job of lowering their cost and providing better food, so we're excited about that. Our next meeting is going to be an extremely important meeting. This meeting is with Bob Bass, it's going to be with that group from the state, and this is part of the planning process. They're wanting to see where we're at. I think we've got a lot to show them. I encourage everybody to attend. Matter of fact, he is encouraging everybody to attend. His words to me is he wants all of the stakeholders there. So this includes judges, it includes the county commissioners, it includes, of course, the sheriff, Allen. He requested them to be there up in design, basically to sit down and sort of look at the plan and figure out what exactly we're going to do and where we're headed. So that meeting is going to be at 6:30, and we're going to have it in the early voting room, just to hopefully house all of the people that planned on being there. Again, I encourage you to come. It's February 26. Also, very important on February 26 is Drug Court. I believe everybody, especially the Commissioners, got invitation to attend this graduation ceremony. This is very important. This Drug Court program has helped us lower our numbers at the jail. It's alternative sentencing, and I think it's working. It's alternative sentencing, and I think it's working. It's one of the most beneficial things that our county is doing currently. We need to figure out a way to continue to encourage this and help fund this, I believe. So, that's going to be at 5 o'clock, and that's going to be here in the McNogly Room, I believe. So, I want to encourage you to attend that right before our County Corrections meeting at 6:30. Now, one thing I want to do as well is, there's been a lot of questions. Matter of fact, today, whenever I come up, I've been hammered by probably 10 different commissioners wanting to know about what our process is, and there's been some questions about the educate... I guess I need to educate you on the bond process, and I'm glad that Justin's here and our lawyers here, and even Mr. Curtis here, because what I've been told is we've got $12.5 million, and Jimmy, please help, because they want to educate. We've got $12.5 million. It's supposed to be split, 6 million to the schools and 6.5 million to the jail. That's what most everybody thinks, but I believe the way the bond is wrote, correct me if I'm wrong, is $12.5 million, and it's not evenly split. Is that correct?
The way the resolution states, and Finance Director Cotton can verify that, it's for improvements, facilities, equipment at the schools, jail, or other county buildings. So, it's the way the resolution...
And that money's not been... Has that money been allocated, or is it just sitting there?
There is no, there has been no action to clearly define how much money goes where.
Okay. And that's, I guess, my point that I wanted to make is, it's... I know a lot of commissioners, I think a couple of them come up today, they thought that they voted on $6 million going to the school system and 6.5 million going to the school. And, the way the bond is wrote, it is 12.5 million, not to be specific on what that is. I think it was wrote specifically vague where we could move that money about as needed. Now, on this bond process, we have already spent some money off the bond, is that correct, Justin?
Yes. We spent some money for... Bobby Ray is already under construction, and they've pulled down some money. The only other checks written off of the bond proceeds aside from Bobby Ray Elementary's expansion is the tasers for equipment inside the jail.
And so, the question, I guess, as far as the procedure, a lot of people, and I'm glad, Mr. Curtis, I'm glad you're here tonight, because I'll direct this question to you, is the procedure of spending that bond money, we've already allocated that money, or have we? You're saying we haven't allocated that money, so we don't have this... We don't have a... Let me gather my thoughts. I apologize. On the process of spending the money, we didn't vote to spend the money for the tasers. We didn't vote to specifically spend the money for the school expansion, correct?
Correct. You voted to issue funds for the project, and the project being defined as...
The jail and schools.
Yeah.
Those are the two projects that were defined in the borrowing mechanism.
Okay. And I guess my, where I was struggling with the process is, when we did the jail, we had the project identified, and we went out to get the money. Then, we sort of wadded that project up, and we sold it away. And, we're now building the process back, but yet we're spending money on that process. That's where I've had a problem, and I wanted to just make sure, and I think some other commissioners as well has had that same issue. And I wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page and clear about how that money is, the process of that. So, if you could go through the process of how it's spent in the finance, I know it goes to financial management stuff, but Justin, if you could explain that, and Bratcher, I know you gave me a letter of how that works as well. If y'all could explain that so that the full court is understanding of that.
May I interrupt? Do you know exactly what the language was for that resolution? Because, I mean, that would give us some clarity as to what we're discussing here.
We've given those, we've sent, we had Cumberland Securities here explaining bond issues to us. Y'all received copies of those resolutions, I think, that... And, Mr. Bratcher, you might want to come to the podium and discuss a little bit about that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, excuse me, but the resolution that we're talking about's already been passed through the court. Is that correct?
By the last county commission. So, the previous commission did that with earmarked monies in discussion. 6 million was supposed to go to the schools and 6.5 million dollars for the jail expansion. And so, that bond issue was approved through that resolution.
So, what we're discussing right now is the language of that resolution and how it's to be determined. Is that what you're asking, Steve?
Yes. Well, obviously, the project itself was specked out as far as the jail expansion goes, but we've done away with that plan. But yet, we're spending money on that plan already. We bought the tasers, and I want to make certain that I was, if we was given the opportunity to vote for the tasers, I think our committee would have unanimously approved that. But, what my problem is, is having say, I think the committee here should be able to vote on the new plan, because we don't have it. We can spend it any way we want, or the way that has been going on right now is Mayor Haley seen the need to buy the tasers through what Tommy had done, and they made that decision, which, if that's the right decision, that's fine. I'm fine with that. But, there's been a lot of question to me of whether that was the correct procedure. So, instead of me answering these questions, I would like the full court to be given the same description of the process, so we're all on the same page.
Let Mr. Bratcher explain the process, but the reasons the tasers were bought, once again, is the need of the sheriff, the understaffing at the jail in itself. He said the need was there. We were looking at equipment, his cameras, and other things there at the jail that would basically make the operations not only safe for our officers, but also for the jail population in itself. And so, there'll be other purchases that will be made for the improvements, and so, you know, the process goes as Mr. Bratcher will explain.
So, one of the questions that was posed earlier during the discussion is what is the language of the resolution? I have it here. It's 24 pages, so I can't read it all to you, obviously, you'll be here all night, but I can tell you that it defines a project that we're issuing the money for, and that project is defined in this resolution as, one, the construction of improvements to and/or the expansion of, and the purchase of equipment for jails, schools, and other public buildings and facilities; two, the payment of architectural, engineering, legal, fiscal, and administrative costs incident to that project; three, reimbursement to the county for funds previously expended for any of the foregoing; four, payment of capitalized interest during construction of the project and for up to six months thereafter; and five, payment of the costs related to the issuance of the sale of the bonds. Okay, so that is what is defined as the project and the project expenditures. Inside of that, of course, is equipment for the jails. That is where the taser question comes into. That is where the authorization to use money for that purpose comes from. And then, the question of how that money is done, that just goes through the 1981 Financial Management Act, and the Financial Management Committee makes the purchase. So, I mean, if there are any specific questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them the best I can, but it's really pretty cut and dry.
Executive Haley, I'd like to ask, because I was part of that commission, and you mentioned a moment ago that it was, when we voted on that, it was explained to us that it would be 6.5 million to the schools and 6 million to the jail, or vice versa. Sorry about that. So, I know evidently the bond wasn't wrote that way, and then the resolution wasn't that way, but I know at least when it was presented to us to vote, that was what we were voting on. And I think that's where the confusion is, is because what we voted for, I think it was unanimous, and it passed. We were voting on 6.5 for one, 6 for another. And, it seems like maybe we're starting to wonder if we're going to stick with that.
I don't know that there's any difference been discussed in any conversations that's been had. There's still 6.5 million dollars that can be spent on the jail. We can spend some or all of it.
The vote was that you passed this resolution, which is what the vote was, and this resolution was passed by that vote. The vote never was, regardless of this language, we're voting for something else, at 6 million, 6.5, whatever it is. If you voted to pass this resolution in its language, this is what was passed. So, this is what was passed back in 2018, as written on this paper.
Mr. Bratcher, I think more, less of what was written and more procedure is what people have been inquiring about, is what is the procedure and the process of spending this money? Should that money be appropriated, and then the vote come through the commission? Or, is it the sole responsibility of Mayor Haley to spend that money? The tasers have been the issue, and like I say, with the sheriff, they're doing a great job, and we feel like that we couldn't have asked for a better sheriff. He's done a great job, but... And I think it would have been a unanimous decision if we had had the opportunity to vote on it. But, the fact of the matter is, some people felt like we should have had that opportunity. But, should that money be appropriated that was spent on the tasers prior to the purchase of?
Well, the reason the tasers were purchased individually is because they were a sole provider purchase, and that is something that I would have to defer to Mr. Cotton, because he knows about that. The way I understand is the tasers were produced by a company that no one else sources the same type of taser anywhere in the country, so there's no point in bidding it. However, otherwise, it would have gone through the normal Financial Management Committee for a vote on purchasing. Mr. Cotton, you...
And they've received a grant to get five tasers, and they wanted them to be compatible tasers as well. And so, with the, once again, with the understaffing particularly at night, and the safety of our officers and its equipment that was necessary for the operations, and once again, like I said, a riot without a taser is a lawsuit waiting to happen, and the safety of our officers could not be risked. This was a request of the sheriff. We could have put it through another account, but to me, that was critical, critical, to making inroads into the safety of our officers at that jail. And if our commitment is to improve the conditions of that jail, and to make it code compliant and certified by the state, that was an excellent way to show progress for the safety of those officers out there. Mr. Cotton, did you want to say something about the financial management?
Well, I was just going to clarify that a biddable item, as far as sole sources are not specifically identified in the Financial Management Act, but the TCA codes that go along with it define a biddable item as an item you can get from more than one place. So, an item that comes from one source is not considered a biddable item, so that's why we did not take it through the normal bid process.
I don't think, first off, the purchase of the tasers is not questioned as far as the need of, so let's just drop that. I mean, we all are in agreeance that we've got to give him every tool that he needs, so let's, you know, forget about that. The, it's the process of, and I'm so glad Mr. Charles Curtis is here, and I'd ask his opinion on this process as well, because I just want to make sure that we're doing it all legally right. And, of course, I'd like, you know, I'd like our committee and also the commission to have a say in how these money is appropriated, because the last thing I want is to spend $6.5 million and not have anything. So, and I want to protect that $6.5 million for the jail. The question has been arose, do we need the $6.5 million? My personal opinion is we need more than that. We've already been through the bid process once. It would come in at $8 million. That's what the first phase of this was. That's how we got to where we are now. If we'd had enough money originally, we'd been building a jail. So, that's my goal, is to protect this $6.5 million, so the sheriff has the money that he needs to do his job, and to get that facility up and going. So, that's my goal, is trying to protect this money. So, the problem that I've got, and what I wanted to voice, I guess, is how I got notified about spending $18,000 and 500 and some change, was a newspaper reporter called me and asked me to make a comment. That was, that's the problem, I think, with the process, is the committee and the commission didn't know about this purchase, and if it was such an emergency purchase, why couldn't we have been notified and went through a process? Again, if this is the approved process, it's the way we've got to live with it, but I want everybody in the commission to know, this is the process and this is how it's done. That's my goal here. Charles, if you've got a comment, I encourage you to come to the podium and make it, whether we're heading down the right track or not.
Commissioner Hilton, I have a question of you. Did I not give you a written report, jail report, on the progress we made that included the purchase of the vests and the tasers, and did you call me to ask anything about that purchase?
You did give me that report, and nowhere in the report was a dollar figure of where it was going to come from. And then, also in that report, you said tasers and vest, the vests come out of Tommy's budget. Tommy can spend that budget however he sees fit. That's his prerogative. And the tasers did not come out of that. It come out of the bond money.
Did you ask me about that before the newspaper article, where the money came from, or asked me?
No, I didn't. I guess I assumed that it would be coming out of his budget. And that's where I want to clear this up and just make sure that we're all on the same page.
Mr. Bratcher, did I do anything illegal?
No, it's completely legal.
Mr. Cotton, did I violate anything in financial management or any of the rules or regulations of the financial policies of Warren County, Tennessee?
Not as far as I can tell.
Thank you.
Mr. Curtis, I have the same question to you.
You've got an attorney, and I'm about as far away from being an attorney as you can be. But, it's my understanding that I believe it's drafted in the Constitution. You can't spend one red cent unless it's been appropriated. The resolution to issue the bonds is authorizing to issue debt. Every time you set the tax rate, you authorize the trustee to send out tax notices. But, they can't spend any of that money until you appropriate it. It just, it seemed like a small technicality, but every dollar on the state level and the county level, they guarantee you in the city. They can't spend money unless it's been appropriated. I told some of you earlier, I served right where you're at as a county commissioner in the 80s, and I served where Mr. Haley's at in the 80s, and I served 10 terms in the legislature. I became important as a legislator, as a commissioner or state legislator, one time a year. That's when we passed the budget. You had everyone's attention, because they couldn't spend a red cent till you passed that appropriation resolution. And so, I can tell you tomorrow for a fact, but I honestly think that you can't spend any money if somebody died and gave you $100 million in this county for buildings or anything. You couldn't spend one red cent till this legislative body passes an appropriation resolution authorizing it to be spent. And I may be wrong, that's just the way I've been taught and the way I've been schooled. And I believe it's actually drafted in the Constitution, that a governor can't spend money unless the legislature appropriates it, emergency or not.
And I want to reiterate, if we had a resolution tonight to spend the money on the tasers, I would make that motion and I would vote for it. I just want to make sure that we're doing the process right, and that the committee and the commission has a say in the process.
I don't think what's happened is a terrible thing. I just, I think you can correct it. We're just talking about $18,000. I think this body will vote to authorize that expenditure after the fact, because it was something that was needed. But, in the future, really, I guess, where have you got that money in capital projects, or where have you...
Yes, sir. It's in a capital project.
Be in capital projects, and whatever y'all end up deciding, if it's really 6 million, I couldn't read that into the resolution, but if it's 6 million for schools and 6.5 million for jail and county buildings repairing equipment, then he would put that in subfunds.
Yes, and actually, if the resolution to issue the debt didn't cover the tasers as well, then that means we did not, we don't have a resolution to allocate the appropriation for the schools project that's integrated already.
Already.
So, I was under the effect that if we could start the school project, then the jail money was also ready to go. So, if the jail money's not ready to go, then neither is that school money.
So, we've already appropriated that. It's already been spent.
We'll need to go through and appropriate the school funds as well as any money that's going to be spent at the jail.
Yeah, and I'm all for it. If we could do that tonight, I'll make the motion to do that, but I'm not sure what the process is on that.
The reality, what we're talking about, once you appropriate these monies, what goes to county general becomes Mr. Haley's responsibility. What goes to schools becomes Mr. Cox's responsibility. That's, you're out of the equation then unless you think there's something bad going on, but that's as far as your legislative duties go. Once you appropriate that monies, and you can scrutinize it all you want to and say things in your appropriation resolution, that's the end of your job. I mean, there's nothing wrong with looking and making sure it's done, but that's his responsibility to make sure everything in county general is spent that way, and Mr. Cox takes care of the money you appropriate for the school system. It's pretty simple.
Yeah, and again, my big thing is, Mr. Cox, his projects are identified, line item by line item what they are, the building, what we're going to do, and all of that. On the jail side, we don't have that yet. Hopefully, here this coming week, in our next meeting, we're going to identify that and outline that a little bit more, maybe put some dollar figures with it. I'm just trying to protect that money and make sure that it's spent the way it was intended to be spent, and that the commission means we have to answer for the dollars of it, that we can answer to say, yeah, we voted for that, versus it's just being spent. We allocated that money. That's all I'm saying. I'm not sure where we go from here. Mr. Haley, I'll turn it back over to you.
I'll have to look at legal counsel and, I guess, draft an appropriations resolution at some point, but the appropriations for the schools already been spent. So, most of it's already been allocated. So, if there was supposed to be an accompanying appropriations document, we did that on the, we did that on the bond issue for the ESG project.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask Mr. Cox a question? Before you spend any of that money, do you get approval before the Board of Education?
Well, as far as the projects, school projects, they're bid, you know, they're all bid, just like they're being bid tonight. The West Elementary Project will be either approved or cut down to the 3 million that we have for that project, and be approved... or cut down to the $3 million that we have for that project, and be approved by the board and it will become a financial plan.
Thank you. I've served on this commission for 20 years, and every dime that we've ever spent has come before this commission. If we're not going to do this, what's the use of having 24 of us?
Mr. Haley?
Yes, Commissioner, Hennessy.
The resolution states that this money is earmarked to be spent for a correction facility and the jail. The language is there. What we have done is exactly what the language dictates. I don't know why there's an issue with this.
I'm going to, I'm a pretty simple speaking man. I don't talk all these big words, but in my opinion, what I think Commissioner is trying to say, it ain't the problem of spending the money on what we need. I think the problem is, is going through the process the right way. He feels as he's commissioner and he's committee chairman, that he ought to be notified where the money was going and what it was being spent on. I think he just wants to be notified. I think it's just a respect thing more than anything. We're elected here by our county. We're put here by our county. And I think he just wants to know where the money's going, as being the chairman of the committee, one man ought not be spending the money. I think that's kind of his thing.
And I'd like to add to that also and say that some of the confusion on the committees that I've been on is not what we're spending the money on, but the fact that we feel like, for some reason, we don't have input anymore. And I know, I understand the 81 Act, I know financial management sets the budgets, I understand that, but in the past, what we've done is we've went through the budget in committee, and basically, we know the people that run those departments, because we meet with them monthly and sometimes bi-monthly, and we kind of know what they need. We know that if they need a new truck or not. And then we'll pass that on to financial management, they'll either approve it or they won't. And now, I think some confusion, and maybe it's not confusion, maybe it's the way it is, we technically have no say. And it's kind of, goes back to what someone said, what are we elected for? I mean, you know, if I'm on the Health and Welfare Committee, and, you know, I feel like I know what they need, because I'm down there quite a bit, and I know, you know, what animal control needs or the Health Department, whatever, I feel like that I ought to be able to know what they need in their budget, you know, I'm working with them. And somebody else that's not on that committee, who are they going to come to? You know, typically, I'll go to somebody that's on a committee that I'm not on and say, do you need more money? You know, I know you're having a financial problem, do you need more money? Because I understand what's going on within that department. And I think that's some of our fears that we're having as committee members, is are we going to have any input at all other than just make suggestions? Because the way you read the laws, it could go either way, how that we, how much say we have.
Hey, Blaine, and one thing to add to that, you know, me and Jimmy's working together with Mr. Ben Rogers. Mr. Jimmy, he asks for every committee, every chair, to come up with what their duties and responsibilities are. And we actually have a meeting scheduled, and that's part of what Mr. Savage was talking earlier with the meeting at the 28th. That's Ben Rogers is going to be here to help facilitate the committee responsibilities, because there's a lot of rules and regulations, and Jimmy, you can talk about that as well, TCI codes, which we have to abide by on County Corrections. I know Gary has to abide by them with the Highway Department and others as well, and so we're going to try to clear up what the committee responsibilities are.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak to Mr. Hennessy's point. Robert, the resolution that was passed was for the issuance of the bond, not for the appropriation of the monies, but that resolution was for the issuance of the debt and not the spending, not the allocating or the separating of the funds.
Thank you.
We have a committee report that needs approval. We have a motion to approve County Correction Partnership Committee Report.
It's just a report. We don't have to approve it, do we?
Usually. I want it approved. I want it approved. Have a motion, and it's from Commissioner Ruble in a second, from Commissioner Evans. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Just wanted to make it approved. Next item is redistricting. There's nothing to report for redistricting tonight. Our main topic tonight is a special presentation, so thank you for bearing with us.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment, please, before we proceed?
I just want to make a comment. In regards to our County Corrections Partnership, Mr. Haley spoke to this issue at the beginning of the meeting tonight. We have had great, I feel like we've had great progress with our County Corrections Partnership. As many people have already reiterated, our sheriff is doing a wonderful job, his administration is doing a wonderful job at the jail, our numbers have dropped. We've got several different projects in the work, in the works right now. As you may have read in the paper, we, myself and County Executive Haley and the Drug Court, specifically Mr. Price, had worked on a state grant that we did not receive. Those funds, you know, we had talked about how they were going to be used. I know that there was a lot of talk about that we were going to look at expanding the drug court based upon the extreme success of our local drug court, which is wonderful. However, we did not get those funds. We're also looking at trying to facilitate getting a mental health liaison, a master's level, credentialed mental health liaison therapist to work in our jail. So, again, to reiterate, we did not get that grant. However, I approached generations about a collaborative effort to begin treatment and counseling in our jail about three weeks ago, and we have begun that process, and I just want to simply make a few statements about that. We have a counselor that's working at, in the jail with Tommy and Jackie every Friday, and Tommy can correct me on some of these numbers from room, but I think Ken's seeing about six to eight people per day when he's there. And so, we're working with these folks on anger management, just on trauma therapy and things like that, trying to help reduce some of the numbers, the recidivism rates. And so, I'm really happy about this project, to be honest with everybody. I'm really thrilled about this. I'm delighted about it. I hope that we'll come to a point where we can find a way to do this, you know, maybe four or five days a week instead of one, but I think it's a starting point, and it's a great starting point. I will say this lastly, you know, we did not get the grant, but one of the counties that did receive the grant, Franklin County, I've made contact with a few people in Franklin County that have been part of the grant writing for the grant, and we've developed a good working relationship. I am also working and assisting with the supervision of the individual that's conducting their therapy in the jail in Franklin County. As a licensed mental health provider, the individual they hired was unlicensed. They required one hour of supervision per week, and the individual that's running that program asked me to provide that supervision. So, I'm meeting with that counselor one day per week, which is going to give us some insight, again, into what's working there, what's not working there, and things we can implement in the jail. I'm excited about that. That's going to give us insight, again, into what's working there, and we can apply to the process here. So, again, I think we've got a lot of good things going, I'm thrilled about it, and just happy to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for all your hard work. Next item is our presentation, so I've been waiting for this. So, one of our community partnerships is with an organization that some of you all are familiar with, and it's Kids of the Community. And so, we have Mr. Barry Dishman here tonight. We also have two of his right-hand assistants, we have Ms. Lacy Jones and Ms. Haley Adams, and they're going to give a little information to us about the impact that Kids of the Community have on our county. And I've said before, you invest in children, you don't invest in jails. This is another one of those partnerships that has had results, positive results, with very little funding from government. So, Mr. Dishman, Ms. Adams, Ms. Jones.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I think Mr. Dishman is going to let me start off. I have a small presentation for you all. I will try to be as timely as possible, because I know you all want to get home in this rainy night. I'm going to start off by giving you a little bit of background information about Kids of the Community. Kids of the Community started about 18 years ago when Mr. Dishman was in court, and he began to see these same repeat offenders every single week. Now, as someone who goes to court often for my job, that is very disheartening. You see these kids, and it just breaks your heart that they keep coming back. So, he decided he was going to come up with a solution to this problem. He created Kids of the Community. We are a local entirely nonprofit organization right here in your hometown. We have about 200-plus kids in our program. These children are considered at-risk kids. That means they come from lower-income houses, they see things that we can only imagine seeing. So, I'm going to give you a brief overview of what we do in our program now. In 2018 alone, we held 164 events for children in Kids of the Community. Among these events, we had 5,946 children in attendance. Now, that's a lot of kids, y'all. That's a whole bunch of kids. We were able to serve 7,753 meals. That's a whole lot of meals. Most of these meals are prepared at our building. Between Lacy and I, we try to cook pretty healthy meals for these kids, because I don't get them anywhere else. Some things we do, on Saturdays, we're there, every single Saturday, we have kids at our building. On these Saturdays, we teach them things that they don't learn anywhere else. For example, we teach our older kids how to balance a checkbook, how to make resumes, apply for a job, things of that nature. But we also have Nerf gun wars, spa days for the girls, all sorts of fun stuff, we take them to the pumpkin patch. Like I said, guys, things that they don't get to experience anywhere else. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, from 4:00 to 6:00, we have homework help. We go pick these kids up from school, we bring them to the building, we feed them a nice warm meal, we do something fun with them to start off, and then we help them with their homework. This young girl, you see in the swing right here, when she first started coming to Kids of the Community, I kid you not when I say that she had her own language. We couldn't understand a word that she said, and she read on a level, I take it back, she could not read. Now, you walk into the building, she comes up to you, she has a normal conversation, and she reads probably a grade above her grade level. And that's the whole reason that we do everything that we do, because these kids need to realize that there is a way out of what they're in right now, and education is the answer to that. We also have parties for every holiday. Here you see our Easter party. We were able to give away bikes this year. We had about four John Deere bikes, they were all girl bikes. The boys didn't care that they were girls' bikes. They wanted a bike. We stuffed about 15,000 Easter eggs. Now, I'm not sure if you realize how many Easter eggs that is, but it's a whole bunch. It took us about four or five days, about three hours a day to stuff all of those, and thanks to the generosity in our community, we were able to give each child two Easter baskets, so not just one, but two. At this event, we had about 160 kids in attendance. This is open to not only Kids of the Community kids, but kids that live in the Housing Authority as well. Next, we have Backyard Bible Club. So, in the summer, children are not in school. When they're not in school, they're not getting a constant meal, and they're not getting constant positive interactions. So, we go get the kids about nine o'clock every morning, and we keep them until about 3:30 in the afternoon. We teach them things, like, for example, I had a class on how to make slime, or we did, someone made these little magnet things that would move, and it was just like little robots and things like that, things that they're not going to get to do at home or at school or anything like that. We also teach them that not only we love them, but that God loves them as well, because that's a strong foundation for just about anything. But on Fridays, we have what's called Water Day. So, you can see these big blowups right here. We have about three or four of those that we just drench with water, and they stay outside all day and they love it. They don't care if it's raining, they don't care if it's not sunny, they don't care. They want to be outside and they want to be doing something fun. You can see we did a shaving cream spot here, and then, one of my favorite pictures that really puts Backyard Bible Club into perspective is the middle one. Now, I know it's kind of blurry and it's kind of far off or whatever, but that is about 100 kids sitting at some tables, having the first meal that they'll have for that day, the first meal that they've had since the last time they're at the building. And so, that, like I said, that's the reason we do this, because they're getting this nowhere else. When school's not in session, we are their go-to to have these things. At Backyard Bible Club, we had about 80 to 100 kids in attendance. When you have that many kids at a building, there's going to be sickness going around. I think between me, Lacy, and Mr. Barry, we all had strep, the stomach bug, pink eye, you name it, we had it. So, our immune systems now are really, really good. Next, we have our garden crew. So, I don't know about you all, and I'm sure most of you were raised this way too, but when I was younger, my family had a garden. We grew our food, we picked it, we canned it, we did all this stuff. These kids have never done this. And so, we started a garden crew. This started a couple of years ago, we took the kids out, we allowed them to do, pick what they wanted to grow, things like that, but it's really, really hard when you don't have a tractor. Have you ever tried tilling a garden without a tractor? It's not doable. Well, maybe I guess it is, but it's really hard. Here you see some of our kids who are out working, and they really enjoy working, guys. That's the thing, these kids aren't lazy. Their work ethic is better than most people that I meet. They want to work for everything that they have. So, this year, the game kind of changed. We were given, or we purchased a tractor, and so we think that this year's garden will probably be one of the best we ever have. We're looking forward to doing some cannon classes and just teaching those kids things that, like I said, they're not learning anywhere else. We also want to teach our kids how important it is to give back to the community that they're in, because I was raised that it's super important to volunteer and it's super important to make those community connections. These kids weren't raised that way, so someone has to be the one to teach them. Here we are at the river cleanup. Now, we had about 12 kayaks, two flat-bottom boats, and one huge tractor tire. This right here is a tractor tire that was buried underneath huge tree roots, a ton of dirt, a ton of trash, everything else, but our kids were determined to get this tire out. We had little handheld shovels, and I don't even know how they managed to do it, but they did it, and it was the most prideful I've ever seen these children in my entire life. We picked this tire up, pushed it all the way across the river, and left it in someone's backyard. They wanted it, though, so it was okay. But, like I said, we teach our children how important it is to give back to the community. You can see how much trash we picked up in just our small mob that we have in the river. We also do fair cleanup. The Warren County Fair Board and Kinsel Entertainment is so generous to us, generous to us every single year, but we do something, like I said, to earn those things. We clean the fair, the grandstands, and before you go to the fair, I don't know if you've ever seen them before the fair starts, but the grandstands are filthy. They're dirty, and no one wants to clean them, so we do it. So, here are our kids, they go, they take one Saturday out of their entire, or they take one Saturday, go all day, clean, scrub, whatever they need to do to get those grandstands looking nice, because they know that if they do this, they get a fair day. If you ever go to the fair on Friday, you see a sea of yellow shirts everywhere you go, and I love that feeling. I love when I see people shake their hand, they're like, yes, I know, I've seen that sea. So, here are our kids, we have about 100 to 105 kids that go on Friday of the fair, and they just go and they get to have the first fair day and the only fair day that they're going to have that week. Like I said, we just want to provide our kids with opportunities they are getting nowhere else. I can't tell you that enough. Here's our Halloween party. We have, we have about 60 kids in attendance this year. Our kids come, they dress up. Here is a Paw Patrol, we have two zombie brides, a unicorn, all those good things at our Halloween party. We have a Halloween costume contest, we do musical chairs, and of course, we always have lots and lots and lots of good food. We also do a Christmas party. This is probably one of the biggest things that we do. This year, we were able to sponsor 115 kids. And when I say sponsor, I mean, we were able to provide them with three or four new outfits, a wish gift of $25 or less, a stocking with hygiene products, and then a family basket for their family to take home that has a set of towels, laundry detergent, things that we take for granted every single day. I've seen a family get excited over Q-tips, something that I have in my drawer that I take for granted every morning. But we aren't able to do that without our community support. A lot of the people that sponsored these kids are teachers, business owners, the people within your community that you see every single day. A few things that I didn't put in this slide that I didn't get to talk about, we also have a back-to-school party. We have, at this party, we give every kid a backpack that's filled with the school supplies they're going to need throughout the year. This year, the community outpour was amazing. We had enough to give some kids two backpacks, to provide them with extras, whatever they needed, and then we had enough left over to still take some to the schools and our community that were in need. And that's the thing, when I was talking to Barry earlier, we aren't just supporting our kids, because obviously, that's what matters most to us, but we're all about supporting the community as well. We were also able to do a food drop. We paired up with Redemption Center and Free Rusty Nails, and we provided over 400 people with not just a meal, but food to take home and cook for probably two weeks. This was bacon, ham, meats, anything you can think of. We were able to provide that for 400 people within the community, not just our families, but everyone. We also do a harvest meal, which is kind of like our Thanksgiving meal for our families. We had 90 people in attendance at that one. This is for not only the kids, but their families as well, so mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, whomever is with them, and we were able to send home every single, to go box with every And we were able to send home every single, so go-bots with every single family at this event. Now, this young man that you see in this picture, he is a phenomenal young man. And I know, without a doubt in my mind, that when he graduates this year, he's going to go on it, he's going to do amazing things. But do I think he could have done that as much as he's going to do without Kids of the Community? I genuinely think that he would have been okay, because that's just the person he is. But I don't think that he would be doing what he is right now without Kids of the Community. And so, the next slide is a quote by Frederick Douglass, and it says, "It's easier to raise strong children than it is to fix broken men." And as someone who went to school for sociology, that's really hard for me to sit with. If something's broken, we need to fix it, right? But there comes a point when you have to take the past and kind of push it away for a minute, and realize that there's an eight-year-old basketball player at Hickory Creek that has more athletic ability in his pinky than I have in my entire body. Or a 12-year-old at Kids of the Community Building tonight, who could honestly be the next Van Gogh. Or the 18-year-old Mechatronics student who has internships all over Warren County, but can't go to him because his family dynamics. This is why we do what we do. Because the young man you see here has those opportunities now. And the little girl you see right here, she can come to the building and draw whenever she wants. And the young man you see up here, we let him dunk on our basketball go whenever he pleases. So now, if you have any questions, you can ask Barry.
Mr. Dishman, you might want to give a little shout-out to Haley. I know she's leaving you and going back to school, so we're going to miss her at Kids of the Community, those of you that volunteer there and work tirelessly for their efforts. She's been a true asset, and so we thank you for your leadership, Mr. Dishman, and for your loyal helpers at Kids of the Community, because they're an important part, important bearable.
Thank you, Commissioner Nurse, Chairman. Appreciate your time tonight. If you want to see this gentleman create, just let him see me get around a microphone and start talking about this program. Am I right?
We've got about another hour left.
Exactly, exactly. I don't want to take up a lot of your time. I want to invite all of you this afternoon, when you finish your meeting, that I will stay here till midnight to gladly answer any questions you might have about this program. You have businesses I'm certain that you want to attend to. I recognize a lot of the faces. And so I'm basically just trying to sum this up really quickly. I would love to, at this time, invite all of you over to our facility. It's something that you have to experience, you can't just hear about. Mr. Willster's nodding his head because he's been there. I don't know if y'all saw him, but I thought that was the young man they were talking about. He's the guy at the back of the truck. His group came over, and we formed a lot of partnerships. But we gladly provide a wonderful meal for you. Obviously, we know how to cook. Mr. Taylor's been there and visited with us while we cooked a meal for him. Love to have all of you. So we'll talk to you, we'll set up a date. If y'all want to come over to walk through the facility, we'll feed you a wonderful meal. We'll have some of the children kind of walk you through what we're trying to do. Mr. Hilton, I just want to address and call him out, because he's a brave soul. It's a different air about the meeting tonight. I'm glad to see that you are all engaged, you are committed to what you're trying to do. And so I feel it's a grand opportunity to be here tonight and to be a part of this. We have fights often in court, and so I'm used to it. It's just occasionally we have to take recess and have a break or do whatever. Ms. Haley did a wonderful job, didn't she? I mean, to follow her in a routine like that, it's just absolutely incredible. The bad part about it is that she's leaving, you know? She's leaving, and so we can't replace her. You know, there's just no way. I mean, we can talk about it forever, but we just can't. But, Mr. Hilton, not to disparage anything to do with drug court, but I actually just wanted to say that your comment about the thing that saved the county the most money is just a little bit off-base. She's the one that's right. She's the one that's right. The whole thing about it's easier to raise stronger children than it is to fix broken men is an old, old statement. If y'all want to Google it, it's, we take it in a different context than when it was first spoke. I stood here 20 years ago, when this gentleman was hiding back here in the back, encouraging me to come over, and I addressed this half of a committee, and I told them about our idea that we had, and about what dreams we had. Mayor Haley, we had a strategic plan for how to do this. And they were impressed, and it was a really good presentation, and... But what we valued was not raising taxes, and we stood on that. I didn't get any money 20 years ago. So we begged, we borrowed, we, with your church, we had the sheriff over to raise funding, we've done whatever necessary to push this program through for the last 20 years. What I value, gentlemen, is not emptying the jail as far as corrections, but I value education. That's where it all starts, and that's where it all went in. And what I'm trying to say is, Mr. Savage came over. He's my commissioner, and I thank the world that man. And he brought, I don't know how many truckloads of water guns that he's brought. But, Mr. Hilton, here's the main thing. When Mr. Savage, if he and I were to walk out into his field, or my field, for instance, if it's not been properly prepared, and we find a watermelon, like we found a watermelon, right? Oh, we'll just crack that dude up, and we'll eat it. But you know what? I'm not certain that that watermelon is going to have the same flavor, the same texture. It's definitely not going to have all the sweat and tears that Mr. Savage has put into ranching that watermelon. So, if at the last moment, if at the point of harvest, if you will, we crack the watermelon open, and it's not ready to eat, what are we going to do? Strap some duct tape around it? We'll go back and talk to somebody else, and we'll ask Gary if, you know, if he might can help us, you know, prepare the soil? That's what you're doing when you're looking at things that, that's the reason our jails are full. It doesn't start today. You know, we're talking about all these ladies that are pregnant and still using drugs. Do you think they've become drug addicts once they're pregnant? No, they're already addicts. They became pregnant, they didn't even know they were having sex at the time. So what I'm telling you is, you have to start where we are. Why did I, I didn't choose at that point arbitrarily. I just saw a need within this community with all the children that kept appearing for court for the same reasons nobody does anything about it. So I chose, like the other great statement, I chose to not stand by and do nothing. We attempted this. It has been the most monumental undertaking I have ever been a part of. But what we do changes lives, not just for a moment, but forever, because we're building stronger children. We gave up on the parents. It's a good thing. I applaud your efforts. I don't know any Mr. shots, but as far as actually bringing mental health into the community, that's the solution. We can stand in order like we do every day in court on Monday. For somebody to go to counseling, they generally don't come. You know, if we have a child that presents with a major problem, it may be six weeks before we get them in. So sir, I applaud your efforts toward that. Mr. Hilton, again, if y'all talk to some of these people, get them to come over. We're glad to do a walk-through this summer. Take five, six days off, come over and help us. It's hard to cook for 100, you know? But I appreciate your efforts, I appreciate your interest. I've seen the different sides of this court. I'm impressed by it, and I applaud your efforts. And I thank you for your time. Shortest speech I've ever made. If y'all will stay here till midnight, we'll answer each and every question that y'all have. If you want to come over some Thursday, we're out there all day on Saturday. You can come over, and we'll gladly answer any questions at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Dishman.
Thank you.
And Mr. Dishman. You've called me out a couple of times. Obviously, I've been in your office a number of times. I think you said I'm the only commissioner that has been in your office in a while. And the value that you give our county is unprecedented, because we can't put a number on that. And I applaud you in that. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you for that presentation. Moving on, we've got old business, any member of the commission got old business? Seeing that we'll move on to new business, we have five items. Item number one is budget amendment. Highway FY 1819-1. We have a motion to approve that budget amendment. We have a motion for Commissioner Bell, a second for Commissioner England. Anybody want to speak to that motion or have questions? All in favor, say aye. We have to roll call. I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Excuse me, Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Judkins?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater? Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote?
Motion carries. Item number two is budget amendment, GFFY 1819-5. Is there a motion for this budget amendment? We have a motion from Commissioner Grissom. We have a second from Commissioner Judkins. Anybody want to speak to that motion? Call for the vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Judkins?
Yes.
Jerry Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Motion carries. Item number three is approval of contract for records management services between the Warren County Schools and Virtual Image Technology. Is there a motion? We have a motion from Commissioners Stout, and a second from Commissioner Savage. Anybody want to speak to that motion or have a question? We'll call for the vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Judkins?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Motion carries. Item number four is Resolution Number 2-219. Is there a motion? We have a motion from Commissioner Ross, a second from Commissioner Stotts. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
Executive Haley?
Yes.
I had a few people ask me about that, about the specific changes. Can we get those scrolled up here? If anyone doesn't know exactly what we're voting on, I know it's been sent out. Do you want to go over that? Jimmy?
I'll let you, I mean, it came out of your committee. So this has to do with the spaying and neutering resolution. So this was adopted into the policy manual for animal control. And so these were the sections that were changed with the help of legal counsel. So if you want to explain those, Commissioner Wiltshire?
All right, there's just a few changes. This is just to the rules and regulations of animal control. Obviously, we added the title change to Incorporated Adoption Center that we actually changed several years ago. Article 2, Section 1 changed to include cats in the title, and last sentence edited to make section applicable to cats as well as dogs. Article 2, Section 2 changed to include cats in title and last sentence edited to make section applicable to cats as well as dogs. Article 5, or 8, I'm sorry, Section D changed to lengthen the holding period from five days to seven, and to include the notice that dogs or cats may be spayed or neutered. Article 11 changed to lengthen the holding period from five days to seven, and a provision providing notice that dogs or cats may be spayed or neutered. Article 13 changed to add Sections H and 8, which provide procedure for adoption of dogs, cats, who are younger than six months of age and have not been spayed or neutered with a deposit of $50. Article 14, if I'm not getting these Roman numerals right, let me know, because I've been out of school a while. Anyway, new language stating that the Warren County Animal Control can accept puppies, kittens, as long as satisfactory proof of spaying of the mothered animal has been completed. So basically, we're locking the doors on the shelter, is what we're doing. Anything that comes in the door, when it goes out, it will be spayed or neutered, unless it is retrieved by its owner prior to that seven-day period. And we've already made a motion.
We've got a motion, a second, it came out of committee, recommendation has been, legal counsel has reviewed. So any further questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And it did go through a joint meeting of Policy and Personal Health and Health and Welfare, and it passed unanimously, and we support this decision.
So any further discussion? Do a roll-call vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Judkins?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?